Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is our city council regular meeting Wednesday, October twenty-third, five-thirty P M. And as a reminder, if you'd like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. Uh, can we have roll call, Mr. Donahue?
Councilmember Yao?
Here.
Councilmember Loramore?
Present.
Councilmember Tesari?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tan Plot?
Here.
Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Mr. Donahue, do we have any, oh, I'm sorry. We're moving on to our closed session, our public comments. Mr. Donahue, do we have any, uh, requests to speak for the closed session portion of the agenda?
No, Mayor.
At this time, the council will be recessing to closed session. Ms. Vega, will you please introduce the items?
Yes, we have two closed session items this evening. The first is the city manager's annual performance evaluation. The second would be a conference with labor negotiators with myself representing the city with respect to the city managers and women.
Great, thank you. Alright, thank you for being here. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We are, um, returning back from a closed session. And Ms. Vega, will you please report the action taken during closed session?
Uh, there were no reportable actions. However, we didn't complete the closed session. So we'll adjourn to a closed session again at the close of the regular meeting.
Alright, thank you. And as we have officially already opened this meeting at five-thirty at the beginning of our closed session, we will move forward in our agenda and we will go with our invocation. And tonight's invocation will be presented by Pastor Ed Moreno with New Day Christian Church.
Oh, Father, your presence. I pray that your power and presence will be felt and sensed in this room and that your spirit will rest upon, uh, each of our council members and mayor, uh, giving them the direction they need, Father, to make the decisions they'll be making this evening. In his name I pray, amen.
Thank you very much for that prayer, we appreciate it. Will now be led by the pledge of allegiance by councilmember Yao.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance of the greatest country. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, additions and revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mr. Donahue, his staff requested to add any items.
No, Mayor.
Have there been any requests from council? With none, we will move on to item number five, presentation announcements. Item five point one is an update by Eastville Public Library Branch Manager Felicia Chin. Ms. Chin, will you please provide your update?
Good evening, your mayor and city council members. As we are heading closer towards the end of twenty nineteen, there are a few things that the library would like to announce. First, on October thirty-first, we are hosting a mini, um, Halloween program. For every five books checked out, children as well as patrons can receive up to one small bag of candy in celebration of Halloween. All are welcome to dress up and show off their fun Halloween costumes as well. Second, on November twenty, uh, fir- from November first through the twenty-second, the library does have a mini fall reading program. For every five books read, for a total of fifteen books, patrons can be entered for a prize drawing of a thirty-five-dollar gift card. Each patron will be able to earn up to three drawing tickets. The absolute last day to claim any tickets is, uh, the twenty-second. This event is sponsored by local realtor Jamie Steely. All are welcome to participate. And lastly, we hope that patrons come out, um, for our annual Gingerbread House Day event in December. All materials will be provided, um, and all children are welcome to attend. We had at least a total of thirty-five, uh, children participate last year. This is a limited event. It is a first come, first served and will be capped off when we reach a certain amount of kids. Um, date and available spaces is still to be determined for this year. The library hopes that all are able to attend and participate in these upcoming events. Were there any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you for your update.
Thank you.
Item five point two is our student liaison report. From our student liaison, Michael Roman. Ms. Roman, please provide your update.
Good evening, council members, guests, and fellow citizens of Eastville. Our Eastville schools are currently up to some great things. Uh, River Heights Intermediate School recently celebrated their National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony, where new members of the N J H S were welcomed into the program. And River Heights would like to extend their thanks to councilmember Plot, uh, for attending this very special event. With the new school year underway, River Heights, uh, is currently promoting unity through campus-wide events such as Red Ribbon Week, which is coming up next week, and spreading awareness about mental illness. River Heights would like to welcome their newest receptionist to the Colts family, Ms. Blanca Paez. Today was the game of the century where both River Heights and Ramirez Intermediate students competed in their annual rivalry basketball game in the E R H S gymnasium, where over seven hundred students attended. It was truly an incredible game with tons of school spirit in both middle schools and the E R H S. Both middle schools and E R H S partnered up for anti-bullying awareness and wore orange to this event in solidarity. Eastville Elementary is currently having their parent-teacher conferences for tracks B, C, and D. They're celebrating Red Ribbon Week, uh, beginning today and all next week. Today is specifically Unity Day, in which we all stand up to bullying. And what, the Wildcat Student Council is planning lunchtime activities for the students to partake in. Their club live program also recently went to a leadership conference out in Indio. And the Wildcat students will be dressing up as their favorite storybook character on October thirty-first for Halloween. P T S, P T A is having a mother-son, uh, magic show on Friday, October twenty-fifth from five-thirty to eight P M. in their M P R. Eleanor Roosevelt High School currently just wrapped up the homecoming season with their annual homecoming football game, or the new homecoming king and queen were crowned. E R H S A S B is proud to announce that the homecoming dance the next day was the most widely attended homecoming in school history. Over two thousand students attended this event, uh, which included two video game trucks, an indoor and outdoor DJ, and food vendors. Uh, Roosevelt High School is also proud to announce that approximately a hundred Mustangs donated blood to the American Red Cross and a school hosted blood drive last week. C N U S D, the Corona Police Department, and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department recently partnered together in a campaign to spread awareness on the severity and repercussions of making school threats. Roosevelt High School was a filming site in this campaign video. Eleanor Roosevelt High School A S B has made it a focus this year to expand school culture through club involvement, sporting events, and fundraisers. Our school has become, uh, the best at culture it has been, and it is only getting better. We are seeing record numbers of student participation and attendance at events and more participations, spirit competitions on campus. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
I don't think we have any questions. Thank you for your report. I do have just one comment, just to reiterate, um, I know you briefly mentioned, but, uh, with today being, what was it?
Unity Day.
Unity Day.
Anti-bullying.
For the anti-bullying, that's one thing that I think sometimes we, we underestimate and don't talk about enough, that we kind of, um, forget about it sometimes, but it's an important thing to remember that this whole month is anti-bullying month also, so, um, it's a great opportunity to talk to your kids, talk to, uh, those youth that you're involved with and, and help them, um, to remember that this month. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Item five point three is the recognition of our outgoing city employees, our finance director, city treasurer, Ernie Reyna, and public information officer, Olivia Applegate. Mr. Jones?
Yes, if Olivia and Ernie could come up here, we, um, we got news last week, um, within about an hour and, uh, and it was, uh, unique to both of them. Um, but, um, when we develop our talent here at the city of Eastville, uh, sometimes other cities come, uh, looking for them. And so, uh, um, and so we're excited, um, for their new opportunities, but we have a little thing prepared for, uh, Ernie and Olivia. So, Er- Ernie Reyna joined the city of Eastville as the finance director in June two thousand eighteen. Ernie is the first finance director in the city's history to also serve as the city's treasurer. Um, sometimes he liked to say he was treasurer, uh, he was our treasurer, uh, without the R, uh, uh, um, uh, um, at the end. Uh, um, but, uh, Ernie was instrumental in maintaining the city's balanced budget. And under his guidance, the city was awarded this, uh, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, the CAFR, for the eighth year in a row. We also purchased two properties in the city under, under his leadership. In addition, Ernie brought payroll and house and automated developer deposits. Did you hear that developers? Uh, um, uh, we are, we're streamlining the process. We, we appreciate the many process improvements Ernie made during his time here. We will miss his immense knowledge to all things finance, his sense of humor, and of course, his underlying love for those Dodgers, uh, uh, Dodgers, uh, the O and seven in the playoff Dodgers. I, I had to get my last shot in, cause I'm a San Francisco Giant. So as a result, we, when he leaves his office, we will convert it to a Giants memorabilia. So, and we already put up the orange and black, uh, um, thing on his door. He thinks it's Halloween, but it's, um, but, uh, Olivia Applegate joined the city of Eastville as a communication specialist in June two thousand seventeen. So just a year prior to Ernie, uh, Ernie, Ernie, um, her dedication to the job and strong work ethic was evident in everyone she encountered. And in twenty eighteen, Olivia received the city's top performer award. In July twenty eighteen, Olivia was promoted to the position of public information officer. Under Olivia's leadership, uh, as the P I O, the city's digital footprint and public presence expanded greatly. She significantly increased the number of followers on the city's various social media platforms, completed the redesign of the city's website, and conducted the city's first community satisfaction study. In twenty nineteen, in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce, Olivia coordinated the first two-day state-of-the-city event, which was the most attended state-of-the-city event and most culturally diverse state-of-the-city event in the city's nine-year history. Um, there are countless other contributions that Olivia and Ernie have made during their time here, contributions that the city will continue to benefit for years to come. They will forever be part of the Eastville family, and although we are sad to see them leave us, we are supportive of their growth, and we cannot wait to see all the great things that they do, go do and, uh, on to achieve in their careers. So, I wanna thank both of you guys for your service to the city of Eastville.
Thank you, Brian. Um, just to kind of reiterate, on behalf of the city council in, uh, the city of Eastville, we, we do understand that we have a, we know we have a great city here, and it starts with our staff. Um, and it happens when you have a great staff and people outside of your city see that, they start to try and take some of our people, some of our good people. So, um, it's something that we have a lot of pride in, knowing that we're developing high-quality staff members that our city manager is doing a great job in, in doing that. You both will be definitely missed. We appreciate all that you have done for our city, um, and we wish you the best in your endeavors. So, as our tradition is, got a picture on your way in and we're gonna get a picture on your way out. See, you're aging, so. If you haven't noticed, we got a rolling podium now instead of a box podium. I was, I don't know if it's a workers' comp issue, if they're afraid we're gonna hurt our back or just thinking I'm too weak to be able to hold it or to lift it up, but, uh, it's kind of nice to roll it around. Alright, we're moving on to item number six, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda. Just kidding. We're moving on to item five point four, legislative update. Update by city attorney Erica Vega. Ms. Vega, please.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Um, a- as you're all aware, uh, the deadline for the governor to, uh, sign or veto bills has passed. Um, and I'm providing just a brief update on some of the legislation that's of interest to the city. Um, overall, the governor signed eight hundred and seventy bills into law, which when you're, uh, in that world is a lot to keep up with. Uh, fortunately, uh, the realm of bills of interest to the city is smaller, though it's still a significant number. Uh, this evening, I just have a brief update on some of the housing-related, um, legislation. There were a number of bills, about eighteen housing bills this session, and several of them, uh, pertain to accessory dwelling units in particular, and are making some significant changes to regulations relating to accessory dwelling units. So I just wanted to highlight that for you and let you know that we are, uh, we will be working with the community development team to look at the city's code and update regulations to make sure we're compliant with the new law when it takes effect. However, some of these, uh, major changes will essentially have the effect of allowing it, at least one accessory dwelling unit, if not two, on every single, single-family lot everywhere in the state. Um, they're pretty drastic changes. And one of the, um, provisions that the city currently has in place that has been a barrier to, um, a lot of garage conversions is the requirement that replacement parking has to be provided. Uh, the city will no longer be able to require that come January one. So garage conversions will be allowed, and we will not be allowed to require replacement parking. Um, there is a couple other changes too regarding setbacks and making sure that, um, we have to make sure that, uh, A D U, that's at least eight hundred square feet could be built, uh, based off of our regulations, so we can't size the regulations to effectively prohibit backyard accessory dwelling units. And there's numerous other changes, um, and we'll go into great detail. Obviously, we'll be working to go through them, and they will be presented to you in great detail when we, when we have a regulation package ready for your review. But just know that that is on the horizon, and unfortunately, there's not much we can do about it at this point. The league and other entities lobbied regarding these bills, and ultimately, uh, the governor chose to sign them. So unless they are repealed or there's legislation, um, excuse me, litigation, um, holding them in advance, um, we'll have to comply. Um, a few other, uh, bills I wanted to highlight related to housing, uh, pertain to, uh, surplus lands held by, um, government agencies. Some of you may be aware that the governor signed an executive order with respect to state property, where they have to prepare an inventory, because the governor's of the opinion that the state owns quite a bit of land that could be developed for affordable housing. Well, there was a couple of bills related to that that have trickled down similar requirements to cities, counties, and other local public agencies. So the city will be required to prepare an inventory of its land that's not needed for, um, if the city's, uh, foreseeable future needs. And if it ever does decide to dispose of land, we'd have to offer it up to affordable housing providers first. So those bills got signed. And then just, uh, there's other bills, um, regarding tenant protections that don't directly impact city regulations, but that have substantially, um, changed the ability to do evictions, uh, rent increases, things like that, just maybe of interest to you, though they don't pertain to city regulation necessarily. And then a couple of other things I wanted to note, um, with respect to some of these bills, that they impose, um, unfunded state mandates, which now the city is having to take on the burden of preparing plans, preparing inventories, things like that, to address affordable housing. Normally, when the state does that, they're required to reimburse the city for those costs. Uh, they have chosen not to do that in many instances, um, where they have found that such overriding concerns, um, mean that the city should be, you know, bearing the cost of this themselves, rather than the state reimbursing them for the cost of preparing plans. Um, so that's, that's just my brief update on housing legislation. Wanna end it on a high note, though. So I will say there was one bill that the governor vetoed, uh, that would be of interest to the city that we, I was surprised he vetoed it, to be perfectly honest, and it pertained to email retention. Um, there was a bill pending that would require, um, the city and every other public agency to retain every single email for two years at least, um, which obviously can place some great burdens on, uh, I T costs, um, infrastructure, public records request costs, and just the sheer volume of emails that have to be retained. But the governor found that that did not strike the right balance, um, in governmental efficiency versus transparency. Didn't think it provided enough extra transparency to be worth the extra cost to the agency, so he vetoed it. So, nice little nugget there, but other than that, um, if there's any other legislation you have interest in, I'm happy to provide future updates. If not, I'll be working with your staff to make sure that we have ordinances in place, um, and ready for your review as these laws take effect.
Thank you, Erica. Um, uh, one of the things is, is there's a lot of bills, eight hundred bills, and we really appreciate you staying on top of these and bringing things to the council before, um, getting ahead of some of these bills. So thank you for, for staying on top of these.
Councilmember, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Erica, are you aware of any, uh, pending legislation, like through the, uh, League of California Cities or Contract Cities Association regarding the alternative, uh, dwelling units?
Um, not presently, um, so pending legislation would just be legislation that would, was.
Litigation, sorry.
Oh, litigation. Oh.
I meant litigation.
No, not yet, not yet. The laws haven't taken effect yet, so we'll see. Um, I, I'm not aware of any push yet, but, but you may find, uh, either the league or individual, um, cities may, may try to take action if they feel that is, the state has overstepped.
Yeah, if you can keep an eye on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments? So in other words, they want to take away local control, but want to put the burden on the local agencies? Okay, just clarifying. Thanks, Erica. In other words, if you want your voice heard, you need to say something. I think too often we, we get caught with being quiet. Speaking of being quiet, we'll move on to item number six, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. I'm just gonna add something quickly here on this too. In the past, sometimes we have, uh, um, corresponded, asked questions. We will, from this point, further refrain from doing that, and either a council member or staff member will get back to you regarding your public comment at a later time. So, Mr. Donahue, any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have three comment cards. The first one is for Keith White.
Mr. White.
Okay, um, uh, talking transit with R T A, we can, um, it works really good. There's over fifteen hundred people using it now. Um, I had me yesterday with Joan at R T A. Um, I'm using it. It actually takes less than ten seconds to board the bus and all that. And we get token transit, um, other agencies will accept our token transit as a one-way transfer, where RT, mutual, OmniTrans, and all that. I know you guys are aware, OmniTrans, um, is becoming a service. They are in a deficit. Um, Samuel County Transportation Authority might be taking over OmniTrans. R T A's done a really good job of watching their money and stuff, and they're able to expand service. But like I said, token transit is a really good option. Hopefully, this will eliminate paper passes in the future. But it's a good thing technology is really great, and I love it. Saves me from carrying extra paper on me, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Donahue?
Next speaker is Ike Bootsma.
Mr. Bootsma, please.
Good evening, council, staff, and citizens of Eastville. I, uh, my request tonight is, um, to working with our own, to get our own zip code. I know we've been working on it for quite some time. So actually, in eleven is when we started talking to Calvert about getting their own zip code. I think it's more important as time goes on, and the reason is because it affects our insurance rates. Um, we're considered part of Corona, and so we're considered in the fire zone by the Cleveland National Force, even though, uh, we are not even close to it, but nine-two-eight-eight-zero is part of Corona. And so our insurance rates are higher than they should be because of the Cleveland National Force. And, uh, you know, I, I'd like to congratulate the city also on, uh, being in the top fifteen as a safest city. And we, I think we could take advantage of that by having our own zip code with lower insurance rates. So, uh, I wanna really have the council and staff to keep working with Calvert and see if we can get our own zip code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bootsma.
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, it was the top twelve.
Mr. Donahue?
Uh, next speaker is Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor, please.
Not, not quite that tall. Um, good evening. I'm very happy to announce that the abatement warrant for the property on Rowan Court was issued, and, uh, actions have been taken on that property. I was very satisfied to hear, um, our code enforcement or community enhancement officer Morales confirmed that there were rats, rodents at the property. So personally, I felt very happy to have heard that. Um, I think that there's some confusion on our street on whether or not everything is complete or not. There's still, like, dead bushes and things like that, but garage is sealed, lawn is cut. Great start, at least. Um, what I'm actually here to talk about tonight is, um, last week, we heard and saw a video from the community enhancement team about kind of what their activities are and what they enjoy and, and so on. One of the things I heard in there is that, um, they like working on problem properties where people are in, uh, financial hardship or, uh, emotional hardship, those kind of things. And, um, I kind of have been thinking about that. I also saw the video yesterday at the Public Safety, uh, Committee. And, uh, one thing that I saw on social media during the past week is that, um, our mayor actually organized and, uh, got about a dozen people to help out at a property that was having problems. Apparently, it had something to do with an illness and a death and that kind of thing. And, uh, I really think that that's a great thing that we should be looking at. So when I kind of think about things and what we have in the community and what we have in the city, I have an idea that we need another component somewhere in the community enhancement area that might have to do with, like, a volunteer corps. And, you know, we have the Community Watch, Neighborhood Watch Program, which for me, the terminology brings some baggage as far as surveillance and other things like that, which doesn't appeal to me, but I actually would probably be interested in being somebody available to be called on to help out in these kind of situations. I bet a lot of other people in our community would. And I think this idea is something that might actually fit under the umbrella of what we talked about from the strategic plan in the community enhancement area, working more with, you know, the police department and, and the community. So I, I just kind of wanted to put that out there as an idea, that I think, um, is something that might actually be very well-received in the community and, and kind of help bring us up even further than where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Donahue?
Uh, no more comment cards.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll be moving on to item number seven, consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mr. Donahue, has any staff member or any members of the public requested to pull an item?
Yes, Mayor, we have requests from the public to speak on items seven point nine and seven point ten.
Counsel, are there any items that you'd like to pull?
I'd like to move the balance.
Second. Mr. Donahue, vote, please.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Plon?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Item seven point nine is a public improvement agreement, Vantage Point Church, northeast corner of Archibald Avenue and Prado Basin Park Road. And Ms. Gina Gibson-Williams, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. We have for you just a couple of graphics in anticipation that there might be a few questions. So first, let me give you a little bit of background. For the Vantage Point Church Improvement Phasing Project, as council is aware, the site is just over ten acres, about ten and a half acres, located off of Archibald and Prado Basin. It was approved in twenty eighteen by the City of Eastvale, and it consists at ultimate buildout of three buildings and five classrooms. And the buildout was phased, it was approved as a phased project, starting with building one, and then two and three, ultimately ending with the sanctuary. And in the agenda report in twenty eighteen, was it approved over a nine-year buildout plan? So, recently, the City of Eastvale was approached by members of the church, and the request was as shown in this chart. What we've done is tried to consolidate the differences between the onsite improvements and the offsite improvements, and what was approved and what was proposed. So, we see on the left-hand side, there's phase one, two, and three. Onsite, what was approved, the buildings, building number one, sixteen eight, sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet, the mobile classrooms and some of the parking, all was approved in phase one. That is not changing. If you see just to the right, that is still intact. Phase two being forty thousand square foot building, not changing, as shown, staying the same. And then, phase three is seventy thousand square foot building, not changing. Now, we can flip over to like the right-hand side of the chart, where we talk about the offsites. So, under phase one, we had full improvements on Archibald with three northbound lanes, utilities, all three drive approaches, and the traffic signal with pole relocation. So what has been proposed is to separate out the improvements over two phases, as opposed to all of them being done in phase one. So, we've listed the items for you. There are two northbound lanes on Archibald with a burn, few utilities, the true drive approaches with the RO meaning the right-out restriction and the main drive approach. And then the traffic signal modification with no pole relocation. And then, in the second phase, the balance of the improvements taking place. The third northbound lane with the curb and gutter, the third drive approach, sidewalk, traffic signal, pole relocation, and parkway landscaping. So that summarizes what the request is for you this evening. The city did work with the applicant to request that the improvements be bonded for, so that, since the request is to be phased and not to be done at occupancy of the first building, and we do have members of the church here in the audience this evening, should you have any questions, and most certainly, I can answer any questions that you may have as well.
Thank you for that presentation.
Certainly.
Mr. Donahue, can we have our public comments?
Yes, Mayor. Our first speaker is Ike Bootsma.
Mr. Bootsma.
Good evening, council and staff. I have, I'm a little concerned about the safety of this delay in getting every, everything in. It goes until twenty twenty-five. On some projects, they insist on things being done before the building even starts. And by delaying it, it doesn't seem quite fair for, you know, the project to be able to delay. I know the Vantage Point Church, it affects them financially, but that part of Archibald is really, I consider fairly unsafe. There's a heck of a curve there. When the curve in front of my house was going to be five percent, they said that was too much of a curve, so I, it's hard for me to understand how this can be safe. And in the, in previous councils, we said a five percent deviation in the street was, was a danger, even if, even if public safety said it was already safe. But, it seemed like we're showing favoritism and delaying it might open up the city if something does happen in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bootsma. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Tom Lanning.
Mr. Lanning.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and City Council, and city staff. We really appreciate the chance to come and to present this to you. And I can just, first of all, say that we love this city. We started in this city about twelve years ago. We always had intention on, and a, and really a dream to create a, a home base for our church here in this city. We tell our people all the time, we don't exist for ourselves, for our church. We exist for the people of this city and for the people of the surrounding cities. And so, we really have just had such a great desire to build a permanent place. And so, as you know, probably about five years ago, we purchased property, not an easy feat for a small church who's just starting out. And then, we've been saving money for the past five years to do that. I wrote letters to you, and I explained many things in great detail in those letters, if you had a chance to read them. But I would, so I don't want to bore you with anything. However, if you want me to talk about some of the reasons that we're here tonight, I certainly will. I can only tell you that we would not be here tonight if we did not feel that it was incredibly necessary, not just for our financial well-being, but for, I don't want to be too overdramatic, but almost, we've talked about even the survival of our church. We have poured a ton of money into this project. There have been numerous things that I could go through that have caused the project price to increase, sometimes dramatically. Sometimes that was God doing it, when we started constructing in probably the most incredibly wet winter in California history, in remembrance. And we lost almost, almost about three and a half months of construction in that time. It elongated our construction project by four months at least, and created a, a pretty good increase in the cost of our construction. Some of it was not quite God, it was our President Trump, who entered into a bunch of, put a bunch of tariffs on steel right as we were entering into this project. And our building is a steel project, and the cost of steel went through the roof. And so, we've experienced quite a bit of escalation of those costs, and of almost every other cost of everything in our project, because everything is related to that. Now, we had a, a large uncontrolled fill in the back of our property that we knew about, that we had experts telling us, you know, about how much it would cost us to fix it. The cost of that went dramatically bigger because of what was in that uncontrolled fill and the size of it. Ended up being another large cost. And I could go on and on, about five hundred thousand dollar fee to hook up to J C S D's water and sewer that we thought was going to be two hundred thousand dollars. But, in the end, I'm not here to give you a sob story, I'm really here to tell you that we want to do these improvements. I mean, we, this is the street in front of our, in front of where we're going to be. We want it to be beautiful, we want it to be well-traveled, we want everything, we want to take care of our part of what we agreed to do. What we want to do is make sure-
If I can-
Yes, sir.
If I can unfortunately cut you off, your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor.
I want to reiterate and kind of support what Mr. Bootsma said about precedent. What we've done in the past has been to require, you know, improvements to be put in a property. And I do understand and hear the concerns of the church, that things got really messed up because of the pricing of things, and I know we've seen that just in general in construction. I have an idea, and I don't know if it's dead on arrival or not, but is this something that, maybe, when we build new houses, we put in infrastructure, and then we tax the homeowners later, or something like that? Is this a proposal or something that we could do in this case? Maybe the city funds these improvements and then has a special tax to get that back in the future from, from, you know, the owners of the property? Because my concern, when I see sixteen thousand square foot building now, forty thousand square foot building in a few years, and then a seventy thousand square foot building later, I don't know if the goals are realistic. I don't see the numbers, but I think that's what I saw from back there. So, are they really going to be able to do those other improvements if there's problems right now with this size? So, that's my concern. I don't like to see precedent, an exception given for one and not for another. I can think back to something in the past with the city that we've done, which has to do with the Lille property. We developed, you know, the scope of what was there, and I believe that the city funded that. Or at least, there was talk about that, and later it would come back, and it was like a four hundred thousand dollar item. So, that's kind of my thought is, I don't think we should give the exception, but is there something we can do to help them out, to get that done now? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Bill Van Loon.
Mr. Van Loon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. While I'm not taking a position on this subject at hand, with your permission, I would like to use it as a platform to overdress, to address an overdue concern. The City of Riverside and the City of Eastvale have done a wonderful job in providing for the various needs of its current and future residents. We have and continue to address the needs in housing, transportation, retail, food distribution, health, and recreation. We have provided security and a police force and a fire departments. We have a school system that is outstanding. We can all take pride in those accomplishments. All of this has made Eastvale a premier place to live and to raise our families. All of that said, there's a basic need that we have failed to address, and that is the spiritual needs of its residents. I in no way am advocating that the city should get into violating any separate separation of church and state laws. But in many cases, the laws that we function under have become a deterrent, rather than encouragement to the establishment of permanent places of worship. In our city, there are several church groups that are meeting in temporary facilities. I admire, I admire the can-do attitudes of those people in exercising their right to gather together to worship. Having been part of one of those groups, I have noted that they live in the hope and the dream of having a permanent location. Churches bring a dynamic to a city that they only can supply. By their very nature, they are caring people. Churches provide various services to the general population, such as grief counseling, substance abuse programs, child development services, youth recreation programs, education assistance, and the list goes on and on. As a council, I suggest that you might discover ways to assist and encourage those organizations in their quest to establish themselves permanently in our city, and let them be an extension of what this city is all about. Not only a city that cares for the material needs of its people, but also for their spiritual needs. I certainly do not envy you in your decision process tonight, but hope you can find ways to assist this church to open its doors. Thank you for giving me this time to address the subject that is dear to me.
Thank you, Mr. Van Loon. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Ed Moreno.
Mr. Moreno.
Mr. Mayor, esteemed councilmembers. Neither Pastor Mark nor any leaders or members of Vantage Point has asked me to speak here tonight. This is something that was just in my heart to do because I know what Pastor Mark and the folks at Vantage Point are going through. I too came to Eastvale well before it was a city to try to do something good for the people who are moving out here. I too knew the value of planting new, need-meeting churches to care for the residents and to serve the community. I understood that the call to plant a new church is one of the most difficult paths a pastor can get on. What I did not know was how painful the process was and what kind of toll a building program would take on me and the people, the congregation, that God has given me the privilege to plead. But I understand the pain and the toll now, because, as you are well aware, new days and myself have gone through, what Vantage Point and Mark are going through now. And my heart aches for them, and without asking me to, I plead with you on their behalf to show kindness and mercy to them. In what is for a church a very dark hour and precarious time, you see pastors are not superhumans. The weight and responsibility they feel and carry, especially in such multi-million dollar projects, is crushing, and pastors are breakable. I know what it's like to wake up in the middle of the night, paralyzed with fear, and just certain that during the coming day, that's when everything we've tried to do comes crashing down, and that we will all have been forgotten. I know what it's like to have to get up again and again before the people have already sacrificed so much. To tell them that the goalpost has been moved on us once again by the ledger, or that another unexpected cost has arisen during construction, or yet another agency that we didn't even know existed had its hand out telling us that we must pay thousands of dollars before they'll stamp a piece of paper that we're going to have to have before we can occupy the facility. I know the embarrassment of having to tell an exhausted congregation that we're all going to have to sacrifice again before we can get to the promised land. I know what it's like to see members stop believing that this is ever going to happen and leave because they don't want to be around when the ship goes down. And when they leave, their financial support goes with them, and with every departure, a pastor's heart breaks. And this all contributes to making the journey even harder, and the likelihood of the project coming to completion even less likely. Esteemed mayor and councilmembers, the people are tired, Mark is tired. The church is a volunteer organization, which means the people don't have to attend, and they don't have to give. This is a crucial hour in the life of this church, and they need a miracle. They need someone to part the waters to let them cross into the land of promise. I'm asking you to let God do that through you. Make a way. Let them inhabit the land with some kind of reasonably mutually agreed-to timeline that gets the required improvements done. Vantage Point is not asking that the requirements be retracted. They're simply asking that the fulfillment of the requirement be delayed to a later time. My plea is that you grant the request.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Mr. Donahue.
No more comment cards.
Mayor and council, if I might add that the first building, just to aid in your decision-making this evening, the first building that was listed as sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet, the projected maximum number of vehicle trips for that building is a hundred and twenty-six. And the peak hour is obviously on Sunday. So, just so you have that information, phase one would generate a hundred and twenty-six peak hour trips on a Sunday. And then also, I believe someone mentioned phasing. I do believe we have done that for the Goodman Commerce Center. There's some traffic signal that's being built currently that was phased. So, just so you have that for your consideration as well.
Thank you. All right, council discussion. Mr. Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding Pastor Moreno and his church, I recall you guys coming and asking for a, a delay on a particular part of your project. It had something to do with a wall. I don't know if you recall that.
I believe so. I miss it now, but I, I, I know that we did know and asked for some-
Can you come to this, this speaker, to the microphone?
For me? For me?
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't remember specifically what it was, but I think you're correct. I think it was a wall consideration.
And the reason I'm asking is, was there a timeline extension granted?
I don't want to say something that I don't know for sure.
Yeah, because I don't call either side.
I'm sure it's in the records or something, but yeah, we had hardship times and we did come to the council and ask for delays or extensions and things like that. And I think some of the requests were granted and some were not, and I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. That's all right right now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rial.
Gina, I have a question for you. I know on the slide it says that, I'm looking at Slide three, off-site proposed, where a traffic signal pole will be relocated. For the life of me, I tried to zoom in, but I just couldn't see where that traffic signal pole will be relocated. Could you kindly just point it out for me? I tried.
Where would be relocated to? If I can help, because I didn't bring my glasses. I'm so sorry, Bill. Could you?
So it'll be at the, on this slide, so north is in that direction, so it'll be the northeast corner. You can see the paving there, which is delineated with the shading, the gray, darker gray shading. So the pole will be, there's an existing pole that is there for the single lane that's in the northbound direction. The pole will be moved to the east by probably another twenty-five feet or so to accommodate for the two additional lanes. Just so you know, the striking there is, that it will accommodate two lanes at this time, and that's what they're proposing to do. Thank you.
And I did read through the staff report, and I want to make sure that I'm understanding everything correctly. Our, our staff did the research, did their survey, and is it accurate to say that we found that all these proposed changes will have no impact on traffic? Would that be an accurate statement?
That is accurate. We did.
With the exception of Sundays.
Sunday has a peak hour traffic of a hundred and twenty-six vehicles. We did analyze the secondary situation, which was phasing of the improvement projects as opposed to all being in phase one. And it was the opinion of our city traffic team and the, and the analysis of the subsequent traffic analysis that this change would not have an impact. And I might also add that the current lane configuration, four lanes, the peak number of vehicles per day that that configuration can take is eighteen thousand. And that's... Oh, sorry about that. Today's traffic is eighteen thousand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for staff as well. My reading of the report, can you clarify? These improvements are going to happen even if the church is not able to do it themselves? They, it will happen according to what we have written here?
Correct, because we're requiring, excuse me, we are requiring them to post bonds for the full amount. So even if the church is not able to financially build all the improvements, we'll have bonds that we can call so that the city can construct them, and then the bond will pay for that.
And that will bring us up to everything that we have asked for, need as a city?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Bootsma, Pla.
Gina, I apologize. My pen wasn't working. I got the peak hours on Sunday, about a hundred and twenty-six. What were the off, the off days? Can you go over those numbers again?
So I have that, we have the analysis for the interim condition of phase one. I can get that information for you. We have the traffic study here. But Sunday being, because that's going to be their primary worship center, so Sunday is actually the day.
Do you know what the peak hour traffic is like on a?
Oh, for a church on?
During a weekday on the PM peak hour?
It would just be the staff, so it could be, if it even gets to the level where trips are peak, it would be something like maybe five or six trips. Definitely negligible.
So when the roadway's peak hour traffic is not when the church's peak hour traffic volume is?
It's off-hours, that's okay. Second question, who's to clarify, the maintenance of these roads, obviously it's not part of the city to maintain it. Just want to make sure that's gas tax and that's Measure A funding, right? I have no questions. Thank you.
My main question was just regarding the, the security and the bond, making sure that if something happens, that they aren't able to do this, that we, we have that completely covered, that the city would not be out any cost for that. And that's fair to say that that's correct, right, that we would not be out any additional costs?
That is the intent of the bond, yes.
Okay. One of my other questions is, and I guess, and I don't know if the applicant would like to speak on this, but one of my other questions is regarding the cost, regarding where that's at. I understand through the letter that we received that these have, these costs have added up in different areas. But I guess my question is, why are we just now coming when we knew about some of these costs before the building even started?
Yes. I think one of the, one of the difficulties that we had is, and I've spoken to a couple of people on city staff trying to even figure this out, my civil engineer is here as well. One of the problems we had is we put together the budget, which we believed was a good budget. We knew when we were conditioned, the offsites, that we would need to have a certain amount in our budget that was for the offsites. However, we spent almost the entire last year during construction still working with the city to get actual plans for all of the offsites. And when I've spoken to the city about that, the main hangup seemed to be with Edison, with other entities that they were trying to work with to work on some of these things, with, with the easements and things like that. So we literally had been waiting for since, so we entered into this building with, into this building project with a certain amount of money in the budget for the offsites and a certain amount of contingency, obviously. As our costs began to rise, we began to eat through our contingency. We've been raising money. We are continuing to do that. What happened was, it was only two months ago that we actually got the final approved drawings for all of our offsites just two months ago. Immediately, we put that to our contractor, who began getting bids on that. And it was at that point that we realized that the, and we had come up with a budget working with the people that we were working with in the city, talking about, okay, you know, roughly where are we and what's going to be, you know, needed. And so we put that budget together, believing that it was in the ballpark of what it was that we were going to need. We, and we got the new costs just two months ago, which was what facilitated this action on our behalf was because it came in at more than twice what it was that we were originally believing it was. So what happened is we kind of, as we were going and raising money and trying to cut costs and building this thing, we knew our, you know, our contingency was kind of getting eaten up by these things, and we were kind of right there at the, I wouldn't say the precipice of just kind of, okay, we can still do this, but man, those offsites have got to come in somewhere where we need them to be. And when they came in twice as much as what we had expected, that's where we had to take a step back and go, okay, now we are seriously out of whack with being able to come up with that much money right here and right now to finish this. And, you know, we're, we have a March 2020 finish date, hopefully. And one of the things that, you know, we asked ourselves is, is it possible for us to hold off moving in to raise more money for these offsite, for the addition of the offsites? And the truth is, is that we really cannot because we owe money now on this constructed building that we cannot enter into if we don't have occupancy. And then we also have extremely high rents that we pay at the church, and it would just be a, it'd be an amazingly devastating blow to try to figure out how to do that, if we could even figure out how to do that. So I hope that answers your question as far as why we're just learning of it right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do have one more final, last public comment. Mr. Donahue.
Yes, the last common card is for Adam Rush.
Mr. Rush.
Any members of the council, this is nice, members of the council staff and, and the audience, I just.
Don't roll away with it.
Yeah. Are these George's casters? Because they're... I just submitted a speaker slip specifically in response to Councilmember Tisari's question. For some reason, I do remember that. I don't know why. That's one of the only things I remember. But New Day Church had came, had come to the council specifically to request, I guess, a payment plan, as it were, on a lot of their fees because of, you know, going, they started with the county of Riverside prior to incorporation, and they got caught in that all process, and then, you know, everything that Pastor had eloquently said better than I can. So it was a payment plan and to avoid a public, or I guess a gift of public funds, we could not allow them to not pay those, but they were essentially allowed to enter in and start the plans without having to pay those fees upfront in total. And I don't know exactly how they kind of metered it out, but there was a similar discussion, and it was ultimately approved by the council. So just to put a pin in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Any additional comments from the council?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Pla. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Donahue?
No more comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pla.
You actually have two more questions. Gina, just going back, you had mentioned the Goodman Commerce Center about, just trying to understand that this precedent has been set before. Can you, can you share that example?
Just the phasing. It has, it's not, I believe there was a comment made or a question that came up about whether or not we have phased improvements for the life of a project or whether we put them all during phase one. And just some of the traffic improvements for the Goodman Commerce Center are coming into play now. And of course, the center is operational.
And to be clear, just to, as I said, there is no financial obligations from the, from the city itself on this, just rephasing.
Correct. That's the intent. The bond amount is based off of the engineer's estimate of the cost of construction, the improvements. So it is an estimate, however, it's a significant amount of money. And even if it was short, it should cover the bulk of it, and we can always update estimates as construction costs change over time due to tariffs and things like that.
Thank you. I have no question.
Real quick, just off of that, do we know if that estimate matches or is close to their estimate?
I have a million dollars, Gina. Right. So, so what happens is the, their project engineer gives the estimate, and then our engineering team confirms. As of, the estimate that we received was six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to do the second phase of the improvements, and that's what the engineer's estimate came in and confirmed by our team.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lorimer.
I would, I would move to approve the public improvement agreement with Vantage Point.
Second.
Before we go to a vote, I would like to continue discussion. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, actually, I was, it was for Gina. Based on your experience, is it uncommon for projects to request a change to phase in improvements in other municipalities?
No, not at all. Not uncommon at all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rial.
The only comment I have is, is I know there's a motion on the floor, but the only comment I have is regarding public safety with this. I would hate for us to get in a situation regarding public safety because of us changing these. The biggest public safety issue with this is getting rid of that sidewalk at face, at the first phase. So I don't know if there's any way that we can put in a temporary sidewalk. It could be as simple as doing an asphalt overlay for the time being until a permanent concrete sidewalk is done. But I just know with the church, if you get people walking, if you get people biking through there, going back to one of the comments that was made, just regarding safety, I think is a big issue, especially regarding on Archibald there. So I don't know if the applicant would be willing or if my colleague would be willing to adjust the motion or if the applicant would be willing to do that in phase one to add a temporary sidewalk instead of the permanent sidewalk, just, just for public safety.
I mean, I think our position would be that, of course, we're willing to do whatever it takes to get this approved and to get, you know, onto that property. And so not knowing what cost that might add to this, I hesitate to agree to something that the council wouldn't make us agree to. But I certainly am not going to take a hard stand that the council would then reject our proposal simply because we wouldn't put in a temporary sidewalk. So I guess, I guess I would say we would like to not do anything further than the phases that we've requested. Even at this request, it's still going to meet or exceed our budgeted amount for the public improvements. And so it's not like we're walking away without spending any money on public improvements. We're still going to be spending quite a bit. So we would like it to remain the same. However, again, we're, we're not unreasonable. And so if, if the council was to say, okay, we'll do it with this, but we will not do it without, then I would probably have a very different answer. I'd say, of course, we're willing to put a sidewalk in. We would, we would like to keep it the way that it is just for our financial ability, but.
Totally understand, and thank you. I, going back to Mr. Van Loon's comment, I totally and completely agree that a house of worship changes your community. It adds to your community. And I think you look at certain communities that have multiple worship places other than a school. No offense to worshiping in a school. You can worship wherever you, you feel. But I think having a place of worship makes a big difference. But as a city, as a council, one of our highest priorities in our city, one of our highest strategic goals is regarding public safety. I cannot support this without a sidewalk, so that's where I'm at.
I don't know if Councilmember Lorimer made the motion?
Yeah, I would like to ask a question, as I said.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, in relation to what Mayor Rigby is asking, staff has gone through and worked through this agreement. And is there, I'm sure safety was considered. Can you please talk through why it was one phase versus the second phase? What was acceptable to the city?
So the, the question that came before the city was more based on the financials. So that's, that's the request that we presented to council tonight. Certainly, the sidewalk was asked for in the second part of the phasing, and there was the bonding for it. There is a berm. There's a berm that could be walked upon, but it's certainly not a sidewalk. So certainly, that's something we can consider.
Councilmember Lorimer and Mayor Rigby, if I might just ask, there seems to be a driveway on one side and a driveway on the other side in most churches' parking lots. As we know with New Day churches, are fairly empty Monday through Friday, and the time that it's used is on a Sunday. Maybe we could identify a path of travel that utilizes the asphalt of the parking lot rather than putting in asphalt for a sidewalk at this time at a temporary location, and we could identify some kind of pathway where as people are going from the bridge through there, it could, could deviate onto this property or something like that and have a path that's not in dirt or something. And maybe there is a creative solution that, but if, if it needs to be a four-foot wide asphalt sidewalk over deep, over native soil, we can also consider that as well. Just wanted to throw a couple of different options out there.
I think an asphalt over native soil is fine. I don't think it has to be. I mean, we know that it's going to be temporary. We know it's only going to be a matter of a few years. A busy main road like that, I just get worried.
Sure.
I get worried even if we deviate into a parking lot. I know most people, especially kids, are not going to want to deviate off of their straight line walk. They're going to want to try and get from point A to point B in the straightest, quickest amount of time.
Got you. Also again for staff, then, do we have any?
Uh, also again for staff, then, do we have any, I, I, I realize we, we haven't talked about, I don't think staff has talked about this internally, but what sort of costs are we talking about estimate wise for putting in a temporary sidewalk as opposed as an interim mandate?
We don't have those costs because we, we, that just came to us right here, so we have not evaluated that.
And no, I, I get that, um. Any other council member have any comments?
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go with the, the initial motion for now.
Mr. Donahue.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
All right, we will be moving on to item seven point ten, hamner place vacation of right of way.
Mayor, members of the city council, uh, tonight for your consideration is the hamner place vacations and dedications. And that presentation will be given by Mr. William Hemsley.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, this item for you is regarding the Hamner Place project. And, uh, the exhibit shown here is the, um, existing right of way, that it's there and was there, um, for the purpose of the Slijzman Road, which is part of the Slijzman Interchange, which as you know was, um, is no longer part of the general plan. So as a result of that being removed, um, we are proposing to induce that, that right of way. And so we're asking for a vacation of this, uh, existing right of way and a dedication of new right of way. Um, also, we're looking at the vacation of, uh, location where the, the previous driveway was going to be accessed, there's a restriction there, so we're asking to vacate a, a new area for the new driveway and then rededicate restricted access for the old driveway, so it continued to be, continues to be restricted. So this, this exhibit shows the, the new right of way. I'm sorry, this, this is the old right of way that will be vacated, this is the new right of way that'll be dedicated. This shows the, uh, restricted access, it'll be vacated to allow driveway to be there now. And this shows the, uh, dedication of a new restricted where the old driveway was. So, um, with us here today is, uh, Rick Manners with Lewis and also Jason Ari with Webb, who's done the design. They'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any further questions in this, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have one comment card from Ike Bootsma.
Mr. Bootsma.
Uh, early my question were answered.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bootsma. Just for clarification, as this is recorded, Mr. Bootsma said that he does not need to comment on this. Thank you. If there's no further comments, is there any discussion between council? With no discussion, I would solicit for motion, so move.
Second.
Mr. Donahue.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, moving on to item number eight, which is our public hearings, which we do not have any public hearings this evening. So we will move on to item nine point one of city council business, Senate Bill Two grant funding authorization. And this will be presented by Ms. Gina Gibson-Williams.
Mayor and council, I'm pleased to present to you an opportunity for funding. Uh, the funding mechanism is SB two signed into law by the governor in twenty seventeen. It affords the city of Eastvale an opportunity to, uh, seek three hundred and ten thousand dollars to aid us with some of the housing legislation that our city attorney just shared with you earlier today. Um, and there are also other uses as well, but we would, in order to apply, uh, for the grant funding, we need to have a resolution signed by council, um, that says that we can apply for the grant. So tonight's request is to have you do just that, uh, authorize us to file for the grant so we can seek the three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, and there are, uh, uh, several items that that could be used for, um, we will, if we are, are successful in winning that grant, come back to you with some of the options that we can utilize that grant money for. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, do we have any public comments on this, I don't, Mr. Donahue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one comment card from Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor.
Um, I attended the planning commission meeting when, uh, Gina had presented, um, to that commission kind of some of the different things that we're looking at. And I wanted to piggyback off of something that the city attorney said as far as, uh, additional dwelling units um, and the requirements that we're gonna have to kind of change some of that. And I think, um, this money might be an area that we could start to look at that. Eastvale, as you know, generally our homes are fairly large, we're about twenty-eight hundred square feet. One of the things that I do professionally as a career, um, I'm a licensed real estate broker and I've been doing a lot of appraisal inspections, I've been in many homes in Eastvale, more than probably anyone else in the room. And when I say in the home, each and every room, there are many additional dwelling units that you don't know about. And I think if we could maybe take a little bit of this money and try to, you know, look at the, the codes and ordinances and try to bring some of these into legal status, we'll start to hit a lot of the additional numbers of housing that we're hearing coming from, you know, requirements here as well. So I, I think a little bit of money into something like that out of this fund, if it's something that's allowed, would probably get us a lot of bang for the buck.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Do you have any more public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, council discussion, is there anyone that does not want to apply for free money? Councilmember Lorimer.
Um, so money is always a good thing, stipulations that come with that, that's, that's my concern. Um, and so I wanna make sure that there are not, uh, there, there's not something that we're walking into. And two, as a follow-up, um, related to one of the, the question that was posed earlier, the suggestion. Um, do we have any plans at this point or is it just at this time to request money, but is there a catch?
Mayor and council, we have, there are fourteen actually opportunities that I identified. Um, it, it did not come up as a discussion item, but I can certainly, uh, share that with you, Mark, if you would. So, so one of which is our general plan that's coming up as well. So there are several opportunity areas for us to capitalize on the three hundred and ten thousand. Um, and in terms of restrictions, I can, there's not a catch per se for, um, applying for the funds, but the funds are restricted to utilize, making sure that we utilize it for housing opportunities. And so what I did, uh, for the planning commission was outline all of the eligible projects under the law and then how they could potentially be applied to Eastvale. But because they are potential and the council has not vetted those, and we just wanted to come up with some suggestions as to how it could be utilized. And so we've done that in a matrix format for you, there are fourteen total.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
We just have to get our application in, but I think by November thirtieth, and so it's three hundred and ten dollars of money from the state that we qualify because of our population. And so, uh, we can either leave the money with the state and let some other agency use it or we can use it, so.
Three hundred and ten thousand dollars, right, it's not three hundred and ten dollars?
Yeah, three hundred and ten thousand.
Okay.
Sorry if I left it, three hundred and ten K, sorry.
Thank you. With no further comments, I would solicit a motion.
So I move.
Second.
Mr. Donahue.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, moving on to item nine point two, Limonite Gap Closure Project Concept Review. And we'll just keep it going with Ms. Gina Gibson-Williams, please.
It's the community development night. So, Mayor and council, we have a presentation for you this evening and I will defer to Mr. Hemsley. He can introduce our consultant, Mark Thomas, and then they will give you the presentation.
Thank you, Gina, this item is the Limonite Gap Closure Project, which is in our CIP. There is currently three point seven million dollars available for this project. And that funding council approved a contract with Mark Thomas to begin the design of the bridge. Uh, Mark Thomas has been working with city staff for the last four or five months. And, uh, this is about the time to present a, a thirty percent concept to you and get, um, council input. This was presented to Planning Commission last week. And so here today to do the presentation is Darren Johnson and Josh Cosper. And they'll, I'll turn it over to them now, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, good evening. Uh, we wanted to come tonight, like Bill said, and just give you an overview of where the project is, give you an opportunity to ask questions, provide any comments that you may have before we continue to move forward with our final design. Uh, so it, the, uh, Limonite project itself, and I don't know how familiar you are with it, but it goes between Hellman Avenue and Archibald Avenue. On the bottom left of the screen, it goes through the, uh, existing ranch at Eastvale Development. Limonite was, has recently been constructed in that area. It then, as you go east of that property, it goes over the Kukamunga Channel and then up through the proposed homestead development and then ties into existing Limonite at Archibald. The general plan identifies that Limonite Avenue through this area would be either a four or a six lane road. What we've done, one of the first things we did is we did a traffic study to determine how many lanes are truly needed in this area. We've identified that four lanes is appropriate to handle the traffic through this area. So we're proposing four lanes between Hellman and Archibald Avenue.
If, if I might just interrupt right there, that, and that's all that Tomp and Western Riverside Cog will reimburse because their next study does not allow, uh, to fund any more than four lanes.
Good point. So the, that's the, the, uh, number of lanes of the project. As we go over the channel, this zooms in a little bit on the channel, the, the bridge that goes over the channel, that's the main cost of this project because of the, the structure. And there's two things that really had driven up the cost of the structure, that when it was originally proposed, the six lanes wide, it was, you know, much more expensive. And then the large skew or the angle that it crosses the channel increases the cost of that bridge. So we're looking, what are some ways we can reduce the cost of the bridge? One of the ways was is we reduced it from six lanes to four lanes, that narrowed the bridge, less bridge, less cost. But also as we went from six lanes to four lanes, it allowed us to, to reduce that angle across the channel and minimize the skew, which then in turn reduced the cost of the bridge also. So those are a couple of things that we did with the bridge over the channel. This is a concept of what the bridge could look like, not necessarily what it will look like, but really wanted to show it. It'll be a three-span bridge, there'll be pure walls in the channel, similar to what's shown in that, that picture. And then we'll have some type of, uh, architectural treatment on the roadway, uh, surface itself. And then the other piece of the project is as you go east of the channel and go through the proposed homestead development, there's their intersection, the main entrance to their development. It'll be a si- typical intersection, similar to what you all are used to. There's two options that we have there for traffic control. One is a signal that all of you are very familiar with, we all drive through them every day. The other option is a roundabout, roundabouts work very well in certain locations. And this is one of those locations where it seems to be a great opportunity for a roundabout. So we, um, uh, really wanted to dive deeper into the opportunity of using a roundabout at this location. And so I have Josh Cosper, one of our senior project managers, he's gonna talk a little bit more about the roundabout, some of the details. And then again, like we said, we will answer any questions you may have on it.
So the purpose of the roundabout is for the oncoming driver to actually see the roundabout, register it, have enough time to safely slow down and enter, merge and exit the roundabout at about twenty-five miles an hour. And how that's done on a higher speed roadway like Limonite Avenue is you'll pull the driver or deflect the driver away from the road. So if you're looking from right to left, you can see that candy cane into an S-shaped curved that basically guides them right back into the roundabout. And, and the length of that big taper is designed so there's enough time for that processing and registering that there's a roundabout coming. And that curvature gradually gets larger to smaller as they make their way through that, uh, big taper. And that naturally slows drivers down. So how the movement is typically done in the roundabouts, the exterior lanes, as the oncoming tri- traffic goes through, they have the opportunity, the exterior lanes can make a right turn or they can continue to go through. Interior lanes, very similar, they have the opportunity to go through or make left turns, uh, through the roundabout. And so when you step back from a hundred thousand foot level, similar to a traffic signal that we've driven through a hundred times over, the right lanes can go through and right, the left lanes go through and left. So additionally, the side streets, they have the opportunity to go through, left or right, they have all the movements. So bicycles and pedestrians, bicyclists in the roadway, when you have, uh, striped roadway bicycle lanes, they'll be, the more casual drivers will effectively be guided out of the roadway into bicycle facilities outside the curb and gutter into like a parkway. And then you'll see them move through basically outside and then as they cross the side streets, they have the opportunity to get back into those striped bicycle lanes. Likewise, you know, they could continue on when you have exterior bike lanes, basically outside of the curb and gutter and outside, they, they just move through the roundabout, just very similar, they're just never in the traffic. And some of your more avid bicyclists can enter the roundabout, much like a vehicle would in the similar movement that we talked about, uh, entering and exiting for exterior lanes. So pedestrians, basically they'll have crosswalks at all the locations. And what's nice about these is that they're not crossing the full roadway, there's actually islands in the middle. So they have basically, they can register traffic at all times in one-way direction. They're not looking both ways as they're crossing like a traditional signal. And traffic is much slower going through the roundabout, so they have time to see the pedestrians and slow and stop. So they'll, they'll have, uh, these, the crosswalks as shown. Uh, before I show this, this is how trucks, semi-truck and trailers will move through roundabouts. And I'll play this a couple of times, cause it's, it's hard to watch ten trucks move all at once. And so what you'll wanna take away is on the far outer, uh, far outer edges of the picture, far left, far right, two semi-truck and trailers can pass through the roundabout side by side without crossing over any of the lanes. And basically the lanes are designed wide enough to allow that kind of movement and the truck and the trailer stay inside those lanes in the through movement. Likewise, in between that, in the center of the roundabout, there's a green and red circle with some gray shading in between. That's generally about a two and a half inch high truck apron. And those are designed that it's high enough so your casual person in a vehicle or a pickup truck, it'll guide them still and keep them from driving over that surface, but allow that trailer, truck trailer, basically to sway over it. And so we're not having to drive, have huge radii to, to make that kind of movement. So I'll play it a couple of times, or as many, many as you want me to. But you can see now the, uh, through movement's making it through, no crossover. Well, I didn't wanna do. And then if you pay attention to the left turn, especially the one coming down south now, you see that trailer sway over that, uh, truck apron. Anybody wanna watch it again? Okay, perfect. So what do, uh, roundabouts look like, there's many, many options, this one's in Rockland Road, it's a very similar dual lane facility. It's actually in a very similar development where it's got some single-family residential, some, some commercial, light industrial, all kind of in that greater area. Um, you'll see some drought tolerant landscaping, a nice Rockland- You'll see some drought tolerant landscaping, a nice Rockland Monument sign, small statues, rocks, kind of hardscape. You could see that truck apron that I was talking about, how it's like a stamped concrete surface, sits a little lower. Out in La Quinta, this was an opportunity to put a big monument sign of a Road Runner with the city emblem out on it and then they've got the desert landscaping. And then some agencies like it a little bit more bland, so Oak Street, it's very basic, Woodbridge Street in Sacramento, just all hardscape. So with that said, I'll turn it back to Darren.
So you got to wrap it up, the next steps, we want to incorporate any comments or questions that you may have tonight, we'll finalize the preliminary improvement plans, develop bridge and landscape aesthetics and then continue obviously working with the developers and finalize the final design PS and E and secret document. So with that, any questions or comments?
Thank you, thank you for that presentation, both of you. Mister Donahue, do we have any public comments on this?
Yes Mayor, we have one comment card from Michael O'Connor.
Mister O'Connor.
Hello again, I know you're having a long meeting, I wanted to share with you, I did go to the Planning Commission and saw this presentation a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to communicate a couple of things that I know I saw that were questions there. First had to do with the crosswalk configuration and one of the suggestions was to have signalized crosswalks or somebody can press a button and it would light up. I'll kind of give a little bit more insight to it, there's a lot of discussion and a couple of people looked a little confused, confusing the roundabout with what we have in the parking lot of this particular development, not the same thing. I do appreciate that they tried to convey to you some configurations of what roundabouts would look like and there's one that's fairly local that is only a single lane each way, but I really like going that way and sometimes I purposely drive through there. It's in the city of Chino, it's south of Riverside, which is the main east-west thoroughfare, there's a street to the south called College Park, which then becomes Eucalyptus. And it's right by the Chafee College area and if you go through that at night, it's really beautiful, which is one of the reasons I go there, it has a big fountain and lights and looks really good. And this location being an entry into Eastvale on Limonite, I think gives us a good opportunity to kind of make a statement as far as what it would look like. I do think that people will get used to having a roundabout, we don't really have any now, that had been some of the comments and questions from Planning Commissioners, like we don't have any or what are we gonna do and they all think about what's here. And I think if we're a little open-minded to that, we'll, we'll be okay. The other concern about safety and, you know, what's going through there, a very important thing to think about is having a roundabout versus an interchange where you have a signal. Your accidents may be higher actually in a roundabout versus the intersection that's signalized. However, those accidents are gonna be much more minor, you're not gonna have head-ons and T-bones, you're gonna have people merging and colliding that way. So I think safety-wise, it's probably a very good option and something that we should consider. I had one other thing, can't remember it, but you've had a long night, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of the council, there may not be another comment card, but I can say that Mister Pulverina, whose project is directly impacted by this and is in the audience this evening. Should you wish to have any questions to answer of one of the developers for the site as well.
Honorable Mayor Rigby, members of city council staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, I'm Raymond Pulverini, a member of the team developing the Homestead. And we have been working with your capable city staff, bringing our project along in accordance with the existing general plan, which envisions these industrial uses around it. And there's two issues with regard to the roundabout that I want to discuss with you tonight and I'll be brief, safety and functionality. With Limonite going from six lanes to four lanes right in the middle of what I'll call our project, right in the middle of the Homestead, this roundabout gives that visual cue to drivers that they need to slow down while the road is narrowing, as it will, to go over the bridge. That safety, we think is key because there will be vehicle access going to the north and south along the roadway. And intrinsic with the safety is the issue of functionality, there will be trucking that will be using this area and having these visual cues to slow down on what is otherwise a fifty-five mile an hour design speed going over the bridge and over into, into the ranch development, this will slow everything down, including as they go over the bridge, which there are curves all through there. And the, the twists and turns of the, the roundabout kind of came to us as we were going through the development, planning with the staff and we looked very carefully at it with our design team. Not just like, wow, that looks like a good idea, but we studied it in detail and concluded, again, safety is enhanced and the functionality of our development is enhanced. And those two things together have caused the development team at Orbis Real Estate Partners to be in favor of the proposal put forth by the city and its consultant, Mark Thomas. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, if you can do me a favor and just fill out a blue speaker card and make sure it gets to our city clerk, please, thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Any comments or questions from council? Nothing? Councilmember Lormore.
Thank you, so the, the funding for this round, I, I heard earlier in the presentation about the, the bridge and money from Tumpf. The roundabout funding for that is not going to come from the city or Tumpf, correct?
Well, I'm not sure exactly, and, and maybe you can speak to, to what is for the traffic control of the intersection. A roundabout is just a traffic control device, so whether we put a traffic signal there or a roundabout, the Homestead project is conditioned with putting in that traffic control device. And so they would be putting it in as part of their development project and as they build the roadway. But what we're trying to do right now is identify where the curb and alignment of the roadway is so that they can design their buildings in accordance with appropriate set packs. And, and a roundabout's configuration is more focused at the, at the, roundabout, at the location of the intersection where a traffic signal can be a lot wider because especially with semi-trucks, those left turn pockets for access into their site are gonna be a lot longer than a normal intersection to get in there. And so there are some different opportunities there that we were looking at. And you're never really delayed at a roundabout, whether it's at, in the peak hour or at two o'clock in the morning, you can always drive through it. Where we get a lot of complaints, why am I sitting at a red light when there's no other traffic around, so you just slow down and, and, and move through it. So that, that's kind of where we are at, but the funding is, will be done by the Homestead project to install that, whatever device is at that intersection. We just wanted some feedback from council on what you wanted to proceed forward with for that location.
Follow-up statement, when it was raised earlier about our residents not being used to this and that, that, that is a concern. I realize people can learn, just the process while learning might be expensive for some people, so the, the. Anywho, those are my thoughts for, the reason, and also why I'd asked about the Tumpf and that we were talking about the bridge earlier. I, I remember a while, not too long ago, a city was looking to utilize Tumpf dollars to install a roundabout and that did not go anywhere because it was not accepted by, I believe, Caltrans, so, thank you.
And, and there was a comment earlier that the accidents go up, I've been in a number of agencies that have installed roundabouts and, and I will be honest, this was not my idea and I didn't even know about this idea until it was shared with me in a meeting and I'm like, we need to talk to council about this to make, before we go much farther in this design because I don't want to, I don't want to waste time or energy if we aren't gonna have support from the council on this roundabout. And in all the locations that I have done, that there is, we, there's been an educational component, we usually create a video on how to, there's a lot of great examples of them because this isn't the first we, time a wheel's been invented or a roundabout's been invented, so you can use the videos from other places and we can get that information out. And in all honesty, we, we've done all, I, Mark Thomas has been involved in a lot of multi-lane roundabouts, as have I. And the, the, the learning curve is not expensive from a collision standpoint, as a lot of people will think. Actually, people get a lot more nervous and they slow down and they don't cause collisions where in, with a traffic signal, they sometimes see yellow looks like orange or, 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 or make a red light look orange or yellow and, and that's where the bigger collisions happen, so, but yes.
Councilmember Yough.
I, I just saw a really scary video of a car jumping over a roundabout, but that's, that's a whole different discussion. So I, I know that from the public comment, we have heard multiple speakers, multiple residents talk about how it's actually safer to have a roundabout versus, you know, a traffic light or stop signs. Do we actually have data to back that up?
Yes, hundreds and if not thousands of roundabouts.
Thank you.
Instead of thirty-two conflict points, there are sixteen and the sixteen that were eliminated are the fatal and, and severe collision ones, the T-bones and, and the left turns and the, and the head-on, head-on broadside ones.
But you could potentially jump over, I'm just kidding.
If, if you design it correctly, that doesn't happen.
That, that video was in Europe.
Yeah, if you, if you design it correctly, that doesn't happen, but.
Councilmember, sorry, thank you Mister Mayor, I, I actually, I, I like the, that, that type of project and, you know, anybody that's driven around in Europe knows that, that's, you run into them all the time and they seem to work over there. The only point I wanted to, to make sure that we do include what Mister O'Connor brought up about the crosswalk notifications, I think that'd be imperative, thank you.
Mayor President Plott.
Thank you Mister Mayor, yeah, I, I think, I, I believe as well, but I knew you guys already have the data for that, it is a lot safer to do, I just think, just want to confirm how we can secure funding for it just to make sure that that is kind of, I think going back to the Councilmember Lormore's mention, I just want to make sure that we're not gonna be disqualifying ourselves using that and not be able to use the Tumpf funds that would be accessible if otherwise we had to do, you know, if we couldn't use it. So just, just maybe look at that and then, but I also agree that Eucalyptus one is really nice. It's actually very nice, it's south of Edison, Edison right there, Eastern Riverside Drive, there you go. I'll, I'll reach out. That's Born Raisin, actually, Eucalyptus was actually not even a street really then.
Way back when.
Yeah, it wasn't a street even then, that was fairly pretty new.
We'll, we'll reach out to Chris Gray from Western Riverside Cog, who's the Tumpf Transportation Director and, and confirm that the roundabout doesn't disqualify us from using. Most of the Tumpf funding is being used for the, the core of Limonite as well as the bridge and so this roundabout would not affect the bridge funding.
And then as far as maybe the aesthetics, when we do get to that point, we have a couple of samples of one, but I think that you might want to utilize that as maybe an option, not a set, but maybe some other option, but it is very nice, so, and simple, it's, it's, it's nice, so.
Especially being the gateway into Eastville.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
Councilmember Lormore.
Thank you, one last question and it related to actually the presentation, that video, the Prager looking video. I know that we have statistics, it's being stated it's safer with vehicle traffic, but talking about semis being intermixed and do we have data on that?
Yes, yeah, there's a lot of roundabouts out there that exist where semi-trucks use them effectively and it hasn't increased collisions, it, it actually helps bring everybody to a similar speed.
Because the, the reason I, is that, you know, you're looking for that way to get in and I have sometimes difficulty getting through the two lanes that semis use right now on the highway and there doesn't seem to be a space to get to that exit sometimes, so I realize everybody's gonna be going slower, but, but we do, but, but that has been proven out because whenever I see videos in my, in my mind's eye or of people going through roundabouts, I never think about a semi going through.
Yes, they, they are designed to accommodate semi-trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments, I think we talked about the, the safety issue aspect of it and I don't want to put him on the spot, but Lieutenant Martin, from your professional opinion, do you see any issues with a roundabout versus a lighted signal?
I think initially there might be a learning curve, but once that, people get used to it, I think the slower speed actually is probably safer.
Great, thank you, and I think we're in a good, a good situation and a good position to start that learning curve at the beginning of a new road being built rather than building the road and then putting in that roundabout. So I think, I mean, people are already gonna be trying to get used to a new road and I think if we started off with a roundabout, then I think that would be good.
And if you are leaving our city by mistake, you could make a U-turn and come back and shop in our.
Maybe that semi will block them in.
We could put a little billboard, thank, thank you, but if, if you want to spend more money in our city, just make a U-turn, sorry.
So I think there is a consensus regarding the roundabout and pursuing that, is there any further direction that is needed at this time regarding this? Councilmember Lormore.
Moving, changing direction, moving over to the bridge, remember that image that was up, if we could pull that back up. They had, it looked like two separate walls as supports underneath the bridge, but as a result, that looks like something that is perfect for people to decorate. And so is, is there a way of mitigating against that?
We can work on that, yes.
Anything else, any other comments? All right, then for this item, we are just looking for direction and I think at this time, staff and our consultant have sufficient direction to move forward.
Now they can move full steam ahead.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. I have nine point three.
Thank you for the presentation, Mark Thomas.
Item nine point three Civic Center Needs Assessment and Site Selection, again, oh, I'm, this is Mister Brian Jones or is this Gina?
I'll, I'll take this one.
Okay.
We split it up, I let her do four and I'll take home one, it was a fair trade. She let me do one, I think. So we, we conducted a Civic Center Needs Assessment as, as part of our strategic plan is identifying a Civic Center. And so we evaluated our existing square footage in our existing city hall and, and then some different components and best practices as the Civic Center Ad Hoc Committee has been going around and touring other city halls, what they've had. And what we concluded was that right now we're using about seventy-five hundred square feet or for existing city hall. And, you know, we're looking at with contract staff as well as our, our existing staff and just future growth of accommodating about seventy-nine staff in the, in the future, just having some room to grow as the city grows. And having a square footage a, as we are on top of each other right now with what we call bunk cubicles almost. But having about thirty-three thousand square foot, which is not very dissimilar to a study that was done back in twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen that assumed about twenty-five thousand square feet for city hall if I recall correctly, so it's, it's pretty close. Then we also said, well, maybe there's an opportunity to have a city hall expansion area of additional ten thousand square feet and do we look at putting in a office space or private office since we can't seem to get any developers to build office space in our city? Maybe we can demonstrate and, and provide some office space in our community and we've actually had a, 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 a headquarters approach us about relocating to Eastvale but we don't have any office space and they'd like to be in this Hamner Place area adjacent to Silver Lakes and, and they would. Uh um and, um and they would need about ten or fifteen thousand square feet, so that was an interesting proposal and so we just kinda put something in there. Uh to, to evaluate that, um and then uh the standards for the county library system are fifteen to twenty thousand square feet. Uh it depending on how big of a city hall, uh library you would like, uh um so um we have both fifteen and twenty thousand. Um we are a very family oriented community, um and, and so uh we're not sure where we wanna be on that spectrum of fifteen to twenty thousand. But they have two different models, a- and then um we just looked at the available parking. Um the um needs and whatnot, um a- and it, it seems a little bit high, but it came out with like a hundred and eighty-seven. And we can continue to evaluate that, but you can see where the breakdown uh of the city hall space. We also did a site selection evaluation, or like, we own this property down at Hamner Place, um but we also have. Uh the Leo Ranch Development and, and then we said, well, what if we were to buy some of the empty parking spaces that are in the Eastville Gateway? And build a city hall somewhere here, uh and um so we evaluated um three different sites. Uh and really sites two and three have the best score ranking with very good to excellent in all categories. A- and so um, you know, and we looked at physical capacity, constructability and infrastructure, environment and safety. Ownership and acquisition, um functional operations, project construction costs and economic o- uh opportunity. And that with the economic opportunity, um I, when we did the tour of Temecula. They spent, I think, about eighty million dollars on their city hall or something uh in that ballpark. And they had somewhere in the two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred million dollars in private investment right around their, their city hall. Based on what they did at their city hall, uh uh um and so um i- if you um leverage your city hall well. Uh you can have some great economic uh private investment and a return on investment right around you. Um so we just, and these are just concept plans for, for um, for looking at different things. Uh um a- and by no means, I mean, these boxes are just boxes of space um and laid out, but it doesn't have to be done this way. Could be stacked on top of each other, like for example, at Hamner Place, you could stack uh um. You could have the library and you could stack another building on top of it, uh like is done here, uh um and so. Um and you can even go up a third story if you wanted, uh um but um. So we looked at all these different sites and, you know, we just based on some rough square footage costs. Uh of, of what that would all entail, you know, we're looking at something around fifty million dollars for the base option. Uh um a- and it goes up accordingly from there, uh you know, you add another, uh you increase the size of the library. Or you add another ten thousand square feet, um and it adds um another five million dollars or so, so. Uh uh um, it, it's just some different options um that we can consider, but w- we're. And then a ki- kind of a conceptual timeframe, just so if, if um we have an RFQ out to design. Uh or it has already been closed, but um, uh we, and we have proposals that we're evaluating, uh um but. If council were to give a, a, a green light to start the design and we were to identify how to properly fund. This city hall and civic center, um here is a conservative estimate of about thirty months from. From design to um to construction and turning over the keys to us, uh a- and moving in and so. Um you know, when you think about thirty months, that's two and a half years away, our lease on this building is up in about two years and so. We're gonna have to um ask our, if we w- were to proceed forward, uh we're gonna have to ask our landlord for a little extension, good thing we. Our landlord likes us, but uh uh um, uh um but we can also figure that out and we pay our bills on time. But um, and then, so um this is just for council review and approval of the needs assessment, site selection. Uh project delivery method and uh um, I also, you know, there, there's a couple of different project delivery types. You know, there's a tr- traditional, you design it, then you bid it and then you build it, uh um and you gotta figure out your own financing for it. Um then there's a design, uh uh, design build process where you take the, the, you. It, it streams, streamlines, it's a little faster and the risk is on the contract. And then there's a public, public-private partnership and we've been touring a number of different projects a- and, and, and looking at that. And um, a- and so, you know, just general sense uh from the council on those and we can provide more information on those. Delivery methods at the next council meeting if that's a desire uh from council, but uh um. And, and we can go into a little bit more detail tonight if you, if you would like, but um we just kinda wanted to share the needs assessment. Uh uh and did we miss anything, um is there any feedback on the needs assessment? And then do you guys have a preference uh 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 on the site selection, uh um, uh you know, I think. One of the challenges is um, the, the Leo family hasn't made a decision on who they're selling the property to. And we've been still waiting patiently, I think we're on year three now, uh uh um, a- and I check in with them on a monthly basis and I just checked in with them last week. And there's still no update on, on who they're selling it to as a master developer, so we're, it's a wait and see. Uh um but we do have uh the uh Hamner Place uh property and we own that property and we're in with CCRs. Um with uh the loose retail that owns the front two-thirds of it, so with that, I'll stop and let you guys share your thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have two comment cards, the first card is for Keith White.
Mr. White.
Um, I, real quick for li- library. Um if you guys design a library, you should go check out the Temecula Library, it's really nice and neat, so you might wanna look at it. Before you, but I feel the Hamner Place would probably be the best bet for the city hall and civic library. But I'm not sure what Leo Ranch is, and that's the only thing I'm a little bit worried about. That's it, but that's my concern, but I prefer Hamner Place for a city hall.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Donahue.
Next comment card is for Terry Tolles.
Mr. Tolles.
Hi there. Put on my specs. Hi, I know some of you here, um thank you for allowing me to speak to you, uh Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My wife is a member of the uh Prince of the uh Eastville Public Library and I'm speaking on her behalf tonight. Uh she had another commitment and she couldn't be here. I think the, the question here is why is a library important to, to the community? And um speaking in her voice, she's had a library card since she was four years old. And uh other than her own personal love of reading, uh there are many other reasons why you would wanna have a, a city library. Uh one of these, as you mentioned, Mr. Johnson, it's uh, Eastville is a city of families. And this is a great place where you can initiate toddler reading programs and it also is a place where um. Corona Library has um, uh just such reading programs and also has, it's a great place for socialization. When these, these children get together. The second thing, there's the obvious educational component uh to the library. Having the children read early is critical to their success and uh I think uh we need to look at this. And um, and understand where the components are. Number three, computer access, as you know, in two thousand eight, uh many people lost their jobs, lost their homes. And the only place that they could access computers was at the, at the public library on the free computers. And I think this provides a service to the community. Uh and the other, the other aspect is, they also have communities uh rooms. Where the community can intersect either uh, uh group meetings, club meetings, uh high schools. Can meet there and use those facilities. And then finally, as I said, I'm gonna make this brief. Uh summer reading programs can be a great place and fun for kids and uh great learning experiences. And sometimes they have thematic kinds of things they do during the summer, so um. Speaking for my wife, uh she'll do anything she can to support such a library and uh, and also uh be very active. In her uh involvement with the uh Prince of the Eastville Public Library, thank you very much for your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue, do we have any more public comments?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. And now for council discussion, councilmember Tari.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I, I'm more inclined to lean toward uh Hammer Place too, just because of the timing of the developing that's going on. And uh, the city manager actually brought it up right at the end, what I was thinking and, and it's about a. Private-public, you know, partnership to see what we can do and I'd like, what I'd like is for uh you and the city attorney to come up with some. Proposals, what the viability is of us doing something like that and what the cost difference would do and I'm sure that we can come up with some creative ways to. To fund it, uh and maybe we expand our options. So that, I, I would like to see that. Thank you.
Councilmember Yao.
I, I um, thank you for the comments and I definitely agree that, you know, even with the very small library that we currently have. We actually have one of the highest book checkout rate in the entire county, which says a lot about our community and that. And that there's a need for this, um I'm, you know, same with councilmember Tari, I'm leaning towards Hamner Avenue, Hamner Place. We've been waiting for years, like the city manager said, and unless someone knows something that I don't, um I. I can foresee the future and I don't know what's happening, my only tiny bit of a concern about the Hamner Place is um. The flooding issue, it's in the report, it says that it's in, it's on the flood map or near the flood map.
Uh no, we're, we're twenty-six feet above the, the, the flood plain is down where Silver Lakes is.
Got it, okay, good to know, um maybe I read it wrong, okay, well, in that case, I don't have any concern um when it comes to that place. In fact, I think it's a great location, families go there all the time, there's Silver Lake, there's restaurants, um one thing I would like to see if we do end up going with Hamner Place is. Maybe having a trail connecting Hamner Place to our schools. Uh uh whether it's Roosevelt High School or the elementary and middle schools, I think it would be a really nice connection to have there, like a trail to connect. Our schools with our civic center.
Councilmember Lormore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I appreciate everybody's comments uh so far and this has been something that. Uh not only this council, but previous iterations of this council have been looking to do long term and. The library is, is absolutely the, something that we need to do at the same time, um as we build the city hall. In fact, the history of this is that we did have time, we were going to move forward with the city hall and the residents spoke up and said, hey, you know what? We need this library, let's do it together and we are, and uh great feedback from the community. So that, that being said, I, if you look at an overview of the city. What I, I believe, the true heart of the city right now, even though it is vacant, is at the Leo property. Um it is where you, you're coming off the freeway, if you're coming to town to come to a city council meeting. It would be right there, it'd be an ideal location. Currently, our, our shopping centers are up here at this part of the city, um the, the Hamner Place is. It works, but i- it's on an extremity of the city, the other is a little bit more, it, again, it's the heart. And being able to have that location, uh to be able to use, utilize that location, I think, would be ideal. I realize that there are questions associated with the. When that property is going to move forward, um and I know that I would love to have seen this property move forward years ago. And I think many of my colleagues would agree with that too. One thing that I do not wanna see, absolutely do not wanna see, is the investment, let, let's say that we decide to move forward with. Uh Hamner Place and in, at the end of Schleisman there, I should clarify, at, at the end of Schleisman there, cause both could be at Hamner. But at the end of Schleisman, if we do decide to move forward with that and we build. And then later on, a different iteration of this council says, you know what, the better place is over at Leo. And we're gonna have to move, that's gonna cost a lot of money. I believe that we should do a, do it once, do it right, if that involves waiting, just a little bit longer. We don't have the money to go forward right now, I believe public-private partnerships, that, that is an excellent way to go, but. We still don't, we don't have the money quite yet. One last thing and then I'll stop talking. Has to do with the, that, that Field of Dreams movie, uh there's that line in there that says, build it and they will come, right? We believe, I, well, I believe and I'm, my understanding is, uh my coun- my fellow council members believe. That the little property is going to be the crown jewel of the city, we should have our city hall there. And if that property is having problems getting off the ground, we go in there first. We build city hall before anything else is built, we build it in the middle of the field and we say, okay. We're planting our flag, this is where the heart of the city is, this is where we need to do it, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor President Plot.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, um. Yeah, I, I also thank you for considering the idea of looking to office space, I think that's one of our biggest vulnerabilities in our city is, is looking at that, so. I think if we're looking to do, you know, city hall, I need to consider that office space area to generate more revenue, might even help in the long term. Uh for us, uh to consider that and, and show people that having office space in our city can be viable, alright, plus you can control the rent as well. On that, um, yeah, I think, I think congruent or to- together with, with the library, obviously a smart build. Uh I, I do have some issue with, with the little property as far as it being there, I, I think it could be ideal, I do agree with Councilmember Lormore that if you're gonna do it, do it right. I, with that being said, I do like the idea of Hamner Place for a couple of different reasons, you can advertise city hall and. Eastville, city of Eastville from the fifteen, and a place that gets two million people a year, and it gets national visitation, international visitation. I like that idea of being able to get that visualization from that area and as it continues to expand and get popular, you, you have that. Again, what, what could the little, the little project bring, it could, it could be something of similar size as well, um it could be where you have that many visitors a year. I, I would ask that council, or sorry, that staff looks at, at, at grants, particularly, I mean, that's gonna be, probably can't find grants for city hall. But for the library side that are out there, I don't know how aggressive we are in, in searching that, but if we can really make a concerted effort to look at that. And, and it might be able to help mitigate some of the overall costs for us and, and put that dedication towards the library. Um I think that, that would be, that'd be crucial, uh again, big fan of the office space side, I think we can make that, I think we can make that happen and make that work. Lewis has been, I think in this whole process, has been phenomenal to work with in the last two years on this project, um and I think. Them come, you know, having us come together, it could be the right time to make it happen on that piece of property, so I, like I said, to, to clarify. I'm good with either lot, I'm good with either lot, again, the, cause again, going back to what Councilmember Lormore said, but there's not necessarily full funding for it yet. So there's still time on our side, but if I had to lean into where things look like right now, I, I would say the Hamner Place could be a good permanent spot. For, for that area, so, um, yeah, thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Yao.
One, one of the things that we have been discussing is also aside from public-private partnership and it's also on. Funding from the county aside from grants, because wh- when we, as, as we have been touring around, um surprise, surprise. Not, like a lot of cities don't pay for their libraries or at least a full amount, they don't. If, in fact, if you do it right, you should not be paying for the full amount, um and especially if we are continuing this partnership with the Riverside County Library System. I think it's very reasonable to ask um for some funding from the county as well as, and a lot of libraries do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Plot or Mayor President Plot?
Thank you, uh something that, that um Councilmember Yao had mentioned and I, and I think it's really crucial. He mentioned about a trail connecting system from the schools to that area. He mentioned about a trail connecting system from the schools to that area, whether it be, you know, future, if that go all the way down to Harrison or just a scholar, but to have some type of trail connecting it from Schleisman, which is a perfect area to get right into that center, but also right into our, to the retail center aspect of it, but goes right to our library. So I think that is absolutely, like, absolutely crucial that that piece happens, that connectivity point that really connects our residents and our homes to be able to create that connection system. So whether if you're coming down Scholar, you're coming down, if we go as far as Harrison and then connect Schleisman over, I think that's very crucial. So thank you for bringing that up. I think that is very important as people walk to the library or wherever they're going. It doesn't have to be for that purpose. It could be just for the retail aspect or the dining aspect. But I think that's a very crucial component to this site in general.
Thank you. Just a few comments that I had, just to echo the thought behind the trails. I think that's crucial also to connect people and places. I know I'll never forget a while back when we were talking somewhat about this, and there was a public comment that was made about libraries are outdated and why are we thinking about a library? The library manager was sitting through, right behind Mr. O'Connor there, and I could see her just boiling as that comment was being made. But I would agree with her. Libraries are needed. They are still needed. I mean, yes, we have a lot of technology, but there's a lot that happens with a library to help bring community, help bring youth, and help bring people together. So I think, I'm glad to see that it seems and appears to be a consensus between our council that there's no doubt that we're gonna move forward with a library wherever this happens. That that's one of our priorities on this. I do like the public-private partnership, and I think that's something that regardless of where we go, that if we start to look at that now, and that could help us possibly move forward sooner than we would typically anticipate. So I would definitely like to see us do that. Regarding location, that's kind of a tough one, because Councilmember Lorimer brings up some good points that we know and envision the Lille property to be the heartbeat of Eastville, not only of Eastville, but we're hoping of the region, that that'll be a destination place. So I mean, to have our city hall there is great. But we're at the mercy of a landowner that has, is not sure what they're gonna do with the property. And we don't know a timeframe on that. Yeah, we don't want to rush into anything. But we do have an opportunity to have a city hall at a place that I feel is just as good because of a lot of the reasons that Mayor Proton Plot mentioned. Visibility to another destination, location. Yes, it's not as easily accessible from the freeway, but it is visible from the freeway. And I think the thing that we've got to think about, too, is if we do it at Lille, it's easily accessible from the freeway, but who is that catering towards? That's catering towards people from outside of our city. Yes, we want to service those people, but the library and city hall is not necessarily focused on people for outside of our city. It's mainly focused for our residents, is for our residents to enjoy. So I think the Lille property or Hamner Place could be that place to service our residents. But I think we have a great opportunity to do it sooner at the Hamner Place. I personally think that the Hamner Place would be a good place for it.
So Mayor, if I might just say, we're shooting to finish reviewing the proposals that we did for the RFQ. And I'll work closely with, as I always do, with our city attorney, Erica, on reviewing a P-three process and seeing if we can do something with that and set it up for that kind of a success. I think what we would like to do is on November thirteenth, come back and say who we have selected as far as when we evaluated the team selection and award. And then, and then come back in December and hopefully have a scope of work and a fee associated with them that we can at least start with phase one of site development. And we could always stop it or restart it at site development or put it on pause. But, and then phase one would be site development. Phase two would be building design, and you don't want to do the building design because the building code changes every year, which we'll bring to you guys at the next council meeting to approve the new building code. And then, and then the third phase would be construct city hall. And you don't want the building code to get too far away from when you're actually gonna construct it. So like I said, we still, if we were to start today, it'd be thirty months out. But it's gonna be a couple of months before we execute a contract. In that time, maybe the Leals will have selected a master developer. Or maybe at the first quarter of next year, they will have selected somebody. And maybe they're working with, you know, and we can do a more closely evaluation of, does it go on the Lille property or the Hamner Place in quarter one of next year? And so we have a little bit of time to do that. And, you know, and I hear Councilmember Lorimer, we don't want to build two city halls, but you could always build a city hall that doubles as an office building, that we become a landlord in the future or we sell it to a headquarters that brings jobs to our city, too. So, I mean, there's lots of different ways to look at that, and we use that money and we invest the building. But one of the things is if we have a recession coming up, or, and I hate to use that word, but an economic correction or anything like that coming up, it's always a good time for cities to do big capital projects because construction labor quickly becomes accessible and the costs go down really quickly. And so as we've gone to some of our city hall, they said, timing is everything when you're building your city hall. Don't build it in the most expensive economic time. Have your city hall ready to go when the downturn hits. And use that time to make it, lock in your interest rate and go. So that, if you have the money available. And so what I'd like to do is figure out a site plan and figure out a budget, and then figure out how do we fund it. There's lots of different ways to fund it. But just, we don't know what that funding mechanism is yet. But if we can get something designed, then we can at least go after grants and show how beautiful our library or city hall is going to be and create a signature building for our community for decades to come.
Thank you. I agree. I think right now, I mean, we aren't ready to build right now necessarily. We're still in the infancy stages. And we still have time somewhat to see what the Leals will do with their property there. So I think we move forward. And we have the option of still placing that building, whatever we design, on Hamner Place or on the Lille property. So... Is there any other direction that is needed on this?
Not really.
Okay.
You guys have provided a lot of great input. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Then we will move on to item number ten, our city manager report and staff report.
Chef Steve Brown from Cochetza, San Diego will host a special event here in Eastville tomorrow, Thursday night through Sunday. We are excited. Chef Brown, who has roots in the inland empire, chose Eastville for his very first Cochetza, San Diego pop-up event in the region. The nine-course tasting menu features wagyu, a grade A-five beef, from around the world, local seafood and produce from Cochetza, San Diego's farms, along with delicious wine pairings. Limited tickets are still available, so if you're interested in going, some of the nights have already sold out. So we're excited to offer this dining experience to our residents and to the region. And we're excited that he chose our Eastville estate to make it happen. And I want to thank my team for helping make that happen. And most notably, Kimberly Wright and Crystal Adams and Angelica Zapata. So they've all been working along with Erica to make that happen. On Thursday, council members and members of the city management team will tour the Shamrock Food Facility located at Riverside Drive in Eastville, founded in nineteen twenty-two. The family-owned Shamrock Foods specializes in manufacturing and distribution of quality food and food-related products. On Thursday, staff will receive AED training, which is right behind us back here. And we have them in all of our city facilities. On Friday evening, the Eastville Chamber of Commerce is having their twenty-nineteen Annual Installation Dinner and Awards Banquet. At the event, businesses will be celebrated and the new chamber members will be recognized. On November eleventh at eight AM, our fourth annual Veterans Day Ceremony will take place at American Heroes Park. The I-five Limonite Avenue Interchange Park is nearing completion. And if you haven't been across the new bridge span, it's beautiful. The ribbon-cutting ceremony will take place on November fourteenth at nine AM at the new park and ride just across the bridge in Aruba Valley. The city clerk's office will host another U.S. Passport Day at Eastville City Hall on Saturday, November sixteenth, from nine AM to one PM. Walk-ins are accepted and scheduled appointments are not needed. Passport Day is open to the public, and all passport applicants and their families are welcome to attend. For more information, please contact our city clerk's office at nine five one seven zero three four four two zero. And you can travel the world. Yoshishari Ramen will be coming to the station at Eastville. It is featured as the best ramen in Orange County Weekly. It is also rated as the number-one ramen in the Orange County by the Orange County Register. So we are getting the best of Orange County here in Eastville. And that is on its way, I think, in spring of twenty-twenty. So we're excited about that. East Brew Cafe and Bakery will be coming to the Eastville Gateway. They are anticipated to open in mid-December. East Brew, a farm-to-table concept restaurant, will specialize in breakfast and brunch while also brewing local coffee. So we will have a new coffee-serving establishment in Eastville. And then, you might have seen on ABC Seven, they did a feature on how Southern California has sixty percent of the safest top fifty cities, and we are one of them in the top twelve. So that is a jump up six spaces. So, and I'm trying to think, there was one other thing. We went to the League of California Cities. A number of us went last week. And I'm sure some of you will share more on that, but there were a lot of great presentations. And I think that is it. So I will let you guys go from there.
Thank you. We will move on to item number eleven, City Council Communication Committee reports. Start off with League of California Cities.
The conference that was just mentioned, the annual conference was amazing. Great to see everybody that was able to make it. And a lot of great educational opportunities, as well as just sharing of ideas during networking with fellow elected officials and also practitioners, city staff. So the great conference took place in Long Beach. And I'm sure my fellow colleagues will chime in.
Thank you. Just to add to that, thank you. It was a good conference, very good conference. And I don't know if anyone would like to share anything specific about in attendance there, but thus our public comments, non-response at the beginning. We learn things at all our conferences. So that's one of them that we're learning from. And we're, like our city manager always says, I don't know how his saying goes exactly, but some days... There it is. So we're learning. We're always learning. So... We'll move on to if no one else would like to share anything about League of California Cities Conference. We'll move on to SCAG.
So SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. We just as, well, this morning, actually, did a teleconference. I'm now the chair of the Audit Committee. And so chaired that meeting this morning. And what that committee does, it takes feedback from Caltrans, which conducts an audit. We also have internal audit controls and hence the Audit Committee. And so the next regional council meeting will be on the first Thursday of next month. And it always happens at the same time as our Chamber of Commerce meetings. So I can never make them, and it bugs me, because I want to be at both. I really do. But I'm over in LA for that. So that's the SCAG report.
Thank you. WR COG.
We meet on Monday, on this coming Monday, so nothing to report.
Perfect. Thank you. Riverside Transit Agency. We will put that off right now. WCE, Western Community Energy, has not met since our last meeting. Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Nothing to report at this time.
Just a quick note on that. I saw that there was a third case found of West Nile in kind of the same area of the northwestern portion of Eastville. So I don't know if we can, I know they sprayed twice. I don't know if we can just continue to push them to educate and look at what else we can do rather than just continuing to spray. The other thing is Mr. Peddinger. Many of you may know of him. He is one of the administrators for the Eastville Crime Watch and Reporting Page on Facebook. And he started a new thing, which is every Thursday night, he does a live stream interviewing different people. He started off with interviewing Brandon and I on the Neighborhood Watch Program, and we thought we got a good turnout, and this bug guy blew us out of the water. He has like thousands of views on this. So it's awesome to see that people are watching, are so interested in that. So I think they actually contacted Mr. Peddinger and said, wow, you know, this was great. Thank you for the opportunity. We've never had that much media attention on social media. So it was a great opportunity.
Yeah, the Vector Control boards aren't typically very publicized. You know, they just float below the radar. And, but Bill Van Dyke, he's the director, and he's the gentleman that was interviewed. And he gets excited. He's actually, he loves bugs. And he's available to come out to any school, you know, organization. He loves going and, you know, talking about his profession. So... You guys are welcome to reach out to Vector Control and the director if you'd like to get his services.
It was awesome. It was a big hit. So people loved it. So we'll go back to Riverside Transit Agency.
We have a board meeting tomorrow, so I will update. And actually, I will have, I'll give some updates on something else, but all about RTA. See if it brief, but I'll make sure to give in more detail up to the next council meeting. But there's going, there's some issues with some regulations on buses and alternative fuels for buses, which is coming at a huge, huge cost to the agency. And so right now, it's determining as far as how many buses they're able to spend to use some of these alternative fuels, some of these bus costs of changing out these buses. It's gonna be a huge impact for RTA then. So we're kind of putting everyone's, putting their minds together to figure out to adhere to the requirements that are set over a certain amount of years, where everything has to be basically, you know, clean, it has to be clean-friendly. But I'll give it more, because I don't want to talk out of line. I think it is, I think it doesn't say twenty-thirty, but I think you're right. But I'll have a more detailed update with some actual factual information, so I don't want to talk out of line. But I'll provide that at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Is that it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that? Clint?
Yes. Thank you. So it was a bummer of a deal. They had their meeting, and they reached out to me and said, are you gonna be in attendance? I said, I can't go. I'm representing the city at the League of California Cities. And they said, well, who's your alternate? I said, well, he's also gonna be at the league. And so we weren't able to participate, unfortunately, for this month. And it is generally a great meeting, and just weren't able to make it this time around, unfortunately. But I did need to go back in relation to SCAG. There was, I was able to participate in a conference related to transportation and housing over the weekend. And it was hosted by UCLA.
over the weekend, and it was hosted by UCLA. Unfortunately, well, the, the information was delivered through a specific prism, and it was the first time that UCLA chose to pursue this path. So, but we did talk about housing and transportation and was able to gain some new insights and think about things because of the prism that they used in a new way. So that was helpful. And also, we had HC, H C, HCD meeting, right? And I don't know, Councilmember, were, were you part of the, is there?
Yes, yes. We, we had that on Monday, and I was at this other conference, so I wasn't able to be there. But did you want to touch on that? Well, you, you said you had a meeting yesterday?
It was on Monday, Monday.
Because whatever was decided at the, that committee meeting was going to you guys?
Yes, yes. That is true, but that will be next Thursday.
Because I, I, they, all we did was go over the new RENA numbers, and they just went over the time elements again. There was really, there, there was no change really. It's just basically the adoption of that, I think, the, the third table for the RENA calculations. Which that was that one I passed out last council meeting that had the numbers on it.
So, so we, we're not talking in code. What, what the, RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This is something that is mandated by the state. SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, is required to put forward their, put forward a regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategies. The RENA numbers are associated with that. That allocation is determined by communications and conference between SCAG, the regional metropolitan organization, and the state. It is required by federal law to do this. Through this conference between the state and SCAG, the regional numbers are developed for long-range planning for the region as to where growth will go, how growth is allocated. The RENA numbers, SCAG staff has suggested that we move forward with option four, which is a combination of previous options that had been presented, but specifically that housing, low-income housing and housing in general should be based around transit hubs as well as near job centers. And so I, I don't know if that cleared it up, but that's what's been going on. And at the coming meeting on Thursday, we're going to talk about RENA, and the option four that was, is being suggested and put forward by the RENA Subcommittee. It seems that that is the generally preferred path to go with the exception of the fact that some areas within Riverside County, specifically Hemet and San Jacinto, are being negatively impacted and that they don't have jobs and are not near transportation hubs, but based on local factors, specifically availability of land. They are being allocated larger numbers than might make sense intuitively.
That reminded me of a question for, for Mayor Proton Plott. Just real quick, off of the RENA numbers and being focused on transportation hubs. I remember hearing that if the buses change their frequency of their route times, if they cut that down, it can qualify some of these bus stops to now be considered transportation hubs, which will now affect housing around some of these bus stops. Is that something that can affect us?
Yes.
And are they still looking at decreasing those bus times?
That I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
If I can find out.
Yeah, I think that'll all depend on what is adopted, the final adoption.
Okay.
Because there's so many, there, there's different elements within each choice that they're looking at. And some of them will include an element that would be impacted, that, that would allow that to, to occur, for them to change the, the route times. Some of the, some of them won't. So it all depends on what the final adoption is.
And I'm sure the RTA, when you guys discuss this, have that in the forefront of the discussion, but just hopefully it's remembered that, when, when that's further discussed. Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Agency.
We haven't met since our last city council meeting.
JCSD Parks Commission.
We haven't met either.
Finance Committee.
Yeah, we met the last, last week, and our next meeting, I actually had it up here, and now it went away. It is, bear with me here, it'll be November nineteenth, so please come out if you would like to go through the warrant register, and if you have any questions, please feel free to join us.
Thank you. Any additional council communications straight down the end? I have two quick things. One is I met with members of the... I'm sorry. The Bhaktshri Swaminarayan. They are the ones that have the temple over off the seventy-one in Chino Hills that you see off the seventy-one there, but they are having their Diwali and New Year's festi- festival, which starts October twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. They've invited us. The entire community's invited any of those days, but council and staff has been invited to attend on the twenty-eighth. If you would like to attend, let me know, and they will make sure to be there to welcome and greet us. I think it'll be, I plan on attending in the afternoon of the twenty-eighth. I think it'll be a kind of a cool event just to see and see what they have there. So that is the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. We, back in August of last year, I believe it was, did our strategic plan. We had a separate workshop for that. If it would be okay with my colleagues, I would like for us to do that again. Maybe not a full extent of that, but I think it was very beneficial and effective for us to do in, in planning and moving forward. I, I think it would be good for us to revisit possibly after the beginning of the year, before budget season, so we can make sure that our strategic goals that we set about a year and a half ago, when we do this again, that they are still where we want to be, see if there's any direction. It'll be almost two years. It'll be about a year and a half if we do it at the beginning of the year. But I'd like to see if we could do that, and I think it'll help us to make sure that we have our budget in line with, with where we're headed. And it could be a short meeting, we don't know. I mean, we could look at it and say, okay, our strate- our strategic is still the same, but I would agree with Councilmember Lorimer there, that I don't know that it's going to be as short. As I said, short, he kind of chuckled under his breath. Us having short meetings, I don't know that they happen very often, right, Mr. Sorry? But. But I would like to see that. If, if there's a consensus with my colleagues, if we could have staff to start to look at that and try and do something so we can help to plan for our twenty, 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 twenty-one budget. I think this would be beneficial for us to do.
Yeah, I would be happy to, to facilitate that. And, you know, in the past, we, we had a facilitator for that strategic plan, and I don't know if, if that went well for you, and you would like to repeat a similar process where each of you were individually interviewed on different topics and issues. And then those ideas were combined in a kind of a anonymous information to kind of create some themes or whatnot, and then we had a group discussion from that to help streamline the, the conversation. If you would like to proceed in a similar process to that with a similar consultant, or if, if you would like to try somebody new or different, just provide that feedback to me. And you don't have to do that tonight.
Okay. We will do so. Thank you. If there are no further comments, then we are going to, I guess we're going to recess to closed session. But for those of you that don't want to stick around for our closed session, our next meeting of the Eastville City Council will be on November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty PM. And this meeting is now being recessed.